I would like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee meeting, June 14th, 2018, Thursday at 7:40 PM. I ask that everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
What we're going to do, I'm going to move for the approval of the agenda, and then we're going to go into some other.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dennan makes a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess. All in favor? The ayes have it, five to zero. I would like to state for the record that Mrs. Friedman and Mrs. Goggins are not present tonight. What we're going to do is, we have the both middle schools, North Cumberland Middle School, McCourt Middle School, eighth grade band, right, Mr. Bowser?
Correct.
They are going to play the National Anthem. Correct?
Correct.
From there, we're going to move into McCourt Middle School Chorus. Am I correct? All right, excellent. So we're going to go from National Anthem to the chorus setup. But I would like to say that the chorus got first place, correct? Excellent. Very, very proud. Very, very proud.[88.57][88.57](applause) And Mr. Bowser, of all the competing bands that same day, you got second place, correct? That's excellent. Excellent. Thank you.[101.32][101.32](applause) So I would like to say, this is what it's about, right? The school committee can sit up here, we can pass policy, we can talk about teachers, contracts, school repairs, but at the end of the day, it's about the kids. It's about us advocating for the kids. So this makes me happy to see everybody here tonight, and I look forward to the presentation. So the chorus is going to be led by Mrs. Davis. Mrs. Davis, are you out there? We got you.
In addition to a significant number of classroom hours, they also have to spend, it's my understanding, a significant amount of time on the road with EMTs. And also, you have to spend time in the hospital as well? Is it like sixteen hours and sixteen hours? So, it is a time-consuming endeavor. And remember, these are also students. And they're high-achieving students, so they're taking some of our most challenging courses. So the fact that they have been able to successfully complete this certification process is really impressive on top of the work that they have to do as students. So, it is my pleasure to introduce all four of them. First, I'd like to introduce Madison Sorava. Madison. Next is Spencer Kramer. Spencer. Next is Stephanie Erickson. Stephanie. And last but not least is Kerry Mitchell. Is Kerry here?
She's in Costa Rica.
Oh, she's in Costa Rica. She's my daughter, and I don't know that? I'm only kidding. Okay. Is that everybody? Did I get everybody? Okay. Congratulations to the three of you. You've made us proud. And I'm really, like I said, I've always been really impressed with people who are willing to take on this responsibility of helping others. So, congratulations and thank you. And good luck. Tina? Where's Tina? Can somebody take a picture of us? Tina? Okay. Let me see what else we have here. Okay. Now, I know that we have a number of students here who are being recognized for their performance on some foreign world language exams. Is Madame Brady here?
The last meeting before school ends, we try to cram everything in. Right? We get the band, the chorus, awards, retirements.
So, some information about the National French and Spanish Exams for those of you that are not aware of it. These are national exams that are sponsored by the American Association of Teachers of French and the American Association of Teachers of Spanish and Portuguese. They are administered in levels one through five across the country. They're in competition, the students are in competition with thousands of their peers within Rhode Island, over ninety thousand students across the nation and the world. And attaining a Medal of Honorable Mention or even just participating in the exam is quite an achievement. So, we really are proud of these kiddos that have done this.
So, how do you want, do you want to introduce each one of them? Or, you know that some are here and some aren't?
Some are here, some aren't.
You want to call them out?
Sure.
And the ones that are here will shake their hand and give them a certificate?
Sounds perfect. All right. So, we've got Monique Gilbert, who received an honorable mention in French.
Monique.
Caitlin Vickin also received an honorable mention in French, and she was not able to attend. I don't know if her sister was here to receive her award for her. And then we have Catherine Shen. Andrew calls.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Kyle Jordan. And Caitlin scooted in on me at the last minute. So, we do have Caitlin Vickin, honorable mention.
I don't believe Kirtana is here.
Lauren Bouzavaj was not able to make it. And then for Spanish, Paige Vieira. Alex Dukubiac, I think had to leave to get to a soccer game. And we have a very special, for Estella, she did so well, she received a medal from the National American Association of Teachers in Spanish and Portuguese.
All right, let's slide over. Tina?
Rachel Walmsley, is she here this evening? She's not one of my students.
No, there's a Rachel, but not Rachel Walmsley. Thank you. Oh, no, 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 I thought it was good. Yes, just very quickly, we were going to recognize Dr. Susan Cody. As many of you know, Dr. Cody stepped in as the interim principal of the high school. And there's no question that she did an outstanding job of coming in. As you can imagine, it is difficult to take on a responsibility in the middle of something. And she came on in the first week in February and has, I think, really done an outstanding of job of leading the high school. I have enjoyed working with her. And we just wanted to take this time to thank her and recognize her for her strong leadership. She is highly skilled and was the perfect person for us at the perfect time. So, she could not be here this evening. She called me and apologized that she had a personal issue that she had to take care of. But I just, I think it's important that we acknowledge the fine work that she did during the time that she was leading the high school. So, I just want to publicly acknowledge her leadership. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell, at this time, I would like to take a two-minute break, if anybody would like to. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Chandler, is the central air conditioner on?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Excellent. Next item on the agenda is the Chairperson's Report, Fiscal Year 2019 Budget Update. At this time, what I am going to say is that we have a special meeting on Wednesday, June 20th. There will be a vote on the amended budget of fiscal year 2019. And that's about all I'm going to say for now. We did get the funding that we were looking for from the town. I thanked the town councilors and everybody else involved. And we'll talk more about this at our next meeting. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Bond Referendum Update. Mr. Dunne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As everyone knows, on this side knows, we, there's been a lot of work in the last few weeks over, around putting a bond on the ballot this fall. There's been a great collaboration between the school committee and the town council. So, everything came together last week when the school committee voted to send the request for the question around the bond to the town council, and then the town council approved it. The bond is for up to eighty-three million dollars, and that's a lot of money. The good news is it's contingent upon the state passing a bond referendum that would reimburse us up to sixty-five percent. And the actual reimbursement rate would be determined at a later date. We won't know for sure until the state bond passes. But basically, our hope is that we would have the potential to do eighty-three million dollars worth of work and pay just thirty-five percent of that. And this is a multi-year project that, you know, there's no way we could do this in one or two years. I think the actual time, as we all know, that the actual timeframe would be worked out later. But some of the things that we were looking to address are some of the highest priority items, what RYE, the Department of Education, calls the safe, warm, and dry priorities. So, all those would be taken care of. The most exciting parts, I think, are the Twenty-First Century Learning improvements that would affect our students in every school in a positive way and would just change our classrooms. Some of those include labs for middle schools. So, we know that the labs here at the high school were redone as part of the CHS 2010 Project. But this would do the labs in the middle schools. It would fix kindergarten space to make kindergarten classrooms more appropriate for Twenty-First Century Learning. It would do basic building repairs on some things that are, some deficiencies that we all see when we walk around. And it would decrease overcrowding in some of our schools. In particular, it would add to two cafeterias, Garvin, I believe, and Community. And then, the other important, well, all these are important, but the other top-of-mind piece is the security and safety upgrades that this would include. So, we have a big document. It's, I don't know how many pages long. Actually, I have a request that we could put this on our website somehow. And I'm sure we'll be doing more marketing around this to tell everyone in town what it's all about. We'll get to vote on it in November. And if voters approve, what that means is the town council could, would then have the ability to issue bonds for up to eighty-three million dollars. Now, that doesn't mean we're going to spend eighty-three million dollars. It means that they could borrow up to eighty-three million dollars over so many years. You know, if budgets don't work out, or if timing, you know, doesn't work out, then things could be shifted around. That's about it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excellent update, Mr. Dunne. Mr. Dunne, I noticed that your family is here. I've been meaning to ask your wife, Mrs. Dunne, does Mr. Dunne speak with his hands at home as well? Excellent. Just always a question I had for the last four years, so, thank you.
Yeah. I have to hold his hand back instead of...
Next item on the agenda is the Reports of Standing Committees, Payment of Bills. Mr. Demodica.
Mr. Chair, we did meet upstairs, and we went over the checkbooks. And on a three-to-zero vote, we approved the payment of bills in the amount of two million, three hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred eight dollars and seven cents. And I would move passage.
I believe, Mr. Demodica, do we, I don't see a vote on here, Reports of Standing Committees.
Payment of Bills.
Payment of Bills, okay. Thank you. Mr. Demodica moves passage of the payment of bills in the amount of two million, three hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred eight dollars and seven cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, five-zero. Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Next item on the agenda, Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update.
Mr. Chairman, we did meet upstairs, and we had Shauna Spillane from Sedesco in, and we went over our reports from Sedesco. Our overdue lunch money has remained about the fifty thousand dollar mark for Cumberland Schools. And the Fiscal Finance Subcommittee is going to hire a collection agency and notify the parents who owe us money that they go into a collection agency. It's gotten out of hand. And it's, you're taking away from something else. And fifty-one thousand dollars is a lot of money. The other thing is, we're still in the good for our budget at the moment. And we're looking at somewhere around an eighty thousand dollar surplus for the year. And so, things continue to look well. And we did vote tonight on the ISKE contract. If it gets approved on Monday by their committee, we have found a funding source to pay for that. So, that was our agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Next item on the agenda, Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorillo.
Unfortunately, I was unable to make the meeting. I'm sure Mr. Dunne will be happy to give the update.
I apologize. Mr. Dunne.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. So, the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee met earlier this week, and we had two items on our agenda, two policies for review. The first one was early entry to kindergarten and first grade. We talked, I should say, there were no votes taken, and we did not have any policy in front of us. But we got a presentation from some teachers from the district, kindergarten teachers, who expressed some concern over our current policy, which allows, I should step back. State law says that you have to, a student has to turn five by September 1st in order to be in kindergarten the following year, or that year. And our policy allows early entry for those students who are born between September 1st or September 2nd and December 31st. So, it's that three-month period. We talked a lot about changing that policy and what it would mean. My sense is this is going to come back to the Policy Subcommittee with an actual recommendation from administration, and maybe either policy change or getting rid of that policy. We have a few options on the table. We'll talk to Mr. Fiorillo about scheduling that. The next policy was dispensing, sorry, dispensing of medication, J-12. We tabled this policy that we, it'll be discussed at a future meeting. We, every policy meeting, we have an opportunity to say, well, what are we going to talk about next? Sort of, what are the next policies we're going to address? And the one that came up at this past meeting was the foreign language requirement for graduation. So, right now, in order to graduate from Cumberland High School, you need two years of a foreign language. And there was discussion about allowing waivers for this. And it's for specific, it would be rare. So, I think, again, we don't have a new policy in place, nothing was decided, but the talk was, do we need to have waivers? So, again, this is a policy that I expect to come back to the Policy Subcommittee. It may be discussed in achievement as well, Mr. Fiorillo, and I can talk about where it's most appropriate. But we'll get a recommendation from administration, and we will talk about it in future meetings and make decisions. Thank you.
Excellent update. Thank you, Mr. Dunne.
Any questions?
Committee? Next item on the agenda, Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. Mr. Dunne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Achievement and Communications did not meet, so we have not met since our last meeting. No update.
Is there a date planned for them to get together and meet, Mr. Dunne?
Not yet.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Comments from the Public. If you would like to say something to the committee, please step up to the microphone and state your name. Anyone? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Mitchell.
As you recall, at our last meeting, we had two women here who gave us an overview and some information about, is it Share the Road? I think is the actual name of the program. And unfortunately, they were going to come tonight, and they were going to speak during comments from the public. But unfortunately, they weren't able to come. But I did get an email from one of them that I would like to read.
Please.
Because I know that the school committee is interested in supporting this initiative. And this is from Laura Bell Humor. I hope I'm pronouncing her last name correctly. Laura says this, "Hi, all. I'm emailing to let you know, we unfortunately won't be able to attend the school committee meeting tonight, but we hope to move forward with spreading the campaign into the schools before the end of the year. If our requests of displaying a 'Drive Like Your Kids Live Here' lawn sign at each of the schools is granted, we would be happy to deliver them to the schools directly or to the appropriate person. We could also include the Share the Road awareness flyer to be posted within the school lobbies and cafeterias, as well as a brief letter explaining the purpose or goal of displaying the signage at the schools during the summer season. Our other idea is to send home a flyer/newsletter with each student before the end of the year to help increase pedestrian safety awareness. One would be focused on safety as a pedestrian for students below driving age. The other would be for high school students and would focus on pedestrian safety as a driver and a pedestrian. We could send a draft for approval before printing. We would just need the information on how many copies would be needed and by which dates." So, there's a little bit more. But I think, as I mentioned, I know that this is an initiative that the school committee is interested in supporting. I will, tomorrow, Cindy and/or I will reach out to Laura. And I believe I have your support in doing whatever we can to raise awareness around this issue. And just one thing from my perspective, like, one of the things that, there's a lot to this. One is knowing how to appropriately walk on a road when there's no sidewalk, or walk on a road when there actually is a sidewalk. One of the things that has always bothered me is when I see runners running with the traffic, which means that the cars are behind you. You can't see them if you're running with the traffic, as opposed to running into the traffic. And the same is true when you walk. You should be walking the same way. Another thing that is, and I think Mendon Road is a great example. When I go to cross the street to go to an athletic event, it is amazing, like, it's almost comical. There are all these signs where there are crosswalks, that, you know, these big signs that tell people they need to stop when there's a pedestrian at the, it is amazing how many cars just totally disregard that. So, I think this awareness-raising campaign will help. And the reason this whole initiative started is because unfortunately, someone lost a life as a result of, you know, a pedestrian walking on the road and being hit by a car. So, whatever we can do to, I think, educate people to be aware of, you know, you can't trust the people who are at your back when you're walking down or running down the road. You need to be able to see them. So, simple things like that, to me, are incredibly important and things that we need to do to keep one another safe. So, anyway, thank you for indulging me on that issue.
Mr. Mitchell, thank you. I would encourage that if they would like to get, come back here, we schedule it maybe for the September meeting, when everybody's back from vacations and summer's just about over. We can help build the awareness and also get them on the agenda rather than on public comment. This way, everyone can see it. So, anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to add, I think the program is great for the town and for the state. And it's really turned a tragedy into something positive, and it's good to see. And I'm really happy to support it, and I'm happy that the schools can support it. So, thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for anything we can do.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda, Public Hearing, Reading of Amended Policies. I apologize, sorry, Mr. Fiorillo. This is all tabled? Next item on the agenda, Old Business. SCR 2018-06 Fiscal Note on the ICSI, which is Independent Cumberland School Employees' Contract. Mr. Mitchell.
Well, as you know, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, we have been negotiating the ICSI contract, and we have come to a tentative agreement. It has to be ratified by that body, and I believe that that is scheduled for sometime next week. We are asking for your support, which would provide the funds to support the negotiation that we just recently completed. So, we would ask that the school committee support this particular resolution.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Demodica.
Mr. Chairman, this was heard up at fiscal. We had a conversation with the business manager tonight. We've identified the funds that would be necessary for this contract, and it did pass upstairs in a three-to-zero vote for the fiscal note. We will wait till Wednesday, I believe is when we're going to have a vote to actually approve the contract. We are waiting for the union to have a ratification vote. So, there is no action on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Excellent update by the two of you. Next item on the agenda, New Business, Discussion and/or Vote to Approve the Cumberland High School Students Eagle Scout Project. Thank you for waiting around. Please come up to the microphone.
This is John Ayk, everyone. And let me just provide a little, a little bit of information before John actually shares with you his Eagle Scout project plan. So, I got an email, I would say maybe about three weeks or so ago, John, and he has an idea for his Eagle Scout project. And I certainly support it one-hundred percent, but I thought, because his idea involves school grounds, I thought it would be a good idea for him to come before the school committee to share his, you know, what he has planned. And also, one other thing, John, isn't it true that you are the person who raises the flag in the courtyard?
Correct.
Okay. So, every single day of the school year, John raises the flag in the high school courtyard, which to me is a wonderful thing. So, thank you. I think that deserves a round of applause, actually. Every day.
Yes.
It's an amazing...
Mr. Mitchell, today is Flag Day.
Today's Flag Day?
Is it today, or was it yesterday? Yesterday.
Today's Flag Day.
Today? Today!
Thank you, Mr. Hess.
Do you take the flag down, too? Or... Yes, sir, I do.
All right. So, all right. John, tell us about your Eagle Scout project plan.
Of course, sir. Good evening, council. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Ayk. I'm a life scout in Troopland Diamond Hill, and I am going for my Eagle Scout. The rank of Eagle Scout is something that requires an unprecedented amount of dedication and hard work to the activity of scouting, and is the highest rank obtainable. My plan is to build and construct two benches at Cumberland Hill Elementary School and Community Elementary School. These benches are called the Buddy Bench. Now, what the Buddy Bench system is, is that it's a bench that promotes anti-bullying culture by loan for elementary school students to have a safe space where other students and teachers can assist them in finding classmates to play with during recess. Now, I'm heavily interested in preventing bullying and discrimination from occurring at such a young age for these children. Now, these benches will be constructed entirely by Troopland Diamond Hill and will be at no expense to the Cumberland School Department or the Parks and Rec Department. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you approve it.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further, any questions from the committee?
Mr. Fiorillo, I'm not an Eagle Scout, but I actually work with Troopland Diamond Hill, and I know John, and I support this project. I think it's a great idea. I know that we have some schools that have Buddy benches, and they can always use more, I'm sure. So, I support this. Do we need to vote on this?
We do.
I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Dunne makes a motion to approve the Cumberland High School Students Eagle Scout Project. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Demodica and Mr. Fiorillo and Mr. Hess. All in favor? Against? The ayes have it, five-zero. John, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
John, I have one question for you. If you are doing the flag every day, what happens when you're sick?
I was expecting, I'm never sick.
John, thank you.
If I may, just one thing about...
Mr. Mitchell.
This has always intrigued me. My oldest son was in scouting for many years. My oldest son was in scouting for many years, and went to Yagu and loved it, and his biggest... You know, he's actually a teacher now, and he says to this day that his... One of his biggest regrets in life is not finishing his Eagle Scout project within the... I think you have to do it by a certain age, correct? And so, interestingly enough, only 7% of all the students, all of the boys who participate in scouting actually earn the rank of Eagle Scout. So, good for you for doing this project, and good luck, and it benefits the children in our district, so thank you so much. Good luck to you.
Mr. Dennan.
I just have one more thing to add. As I mentioned, I work with Troopland Diamond Hill, and they have a bunch of scouts who will be working on their Eagle projects, and they will be looking for projects. So I think if there are any projects the school department needs, you can get in touch with me, and I can help out.
I've got one.
You want to share it now, or later?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennan. Excellent job. Next item on the agenda: Discussion and/or vote to approve the sale of town-owned parcels of land located near Joseph L. McCourt Middle School. So, I'm going to spend a little time... I did receive an email from attorney from the town of Cumberland, Mr. Chris Alger. I'm going to read the email. Chairman Salvatore, the town... This was on May 7th. Chairman Salvatore, the town is considering selling the highlighted parcels on the attached document, which I forward this document to the committee. Could you please place on the school committee's agenda and advise if the school department has any use for any of these properties, particularly those on the first page? Two lots are located on Highland, and four are located on Clermont. Both streets surround McCourt Middle School. On the second page of the attachment, all six lots are located off Crowell Street. So, the Highland Avenue, there's plat nine, lots 97 and 155. On the Clermont Street is plat nine, lots 116, lots 137, lots 138, and lots 190. And the last street, Crowell Street, is plat six, and that includes lots 109, 110, 112, 115, 116, and 117. This vote tonight makes a recommendation to the town, to the town council, to the mayor, whether we want them selling these lots or not. So, none of the revenue stream comes to the schools. They're not our lots. It's just a recommendation if the town should sell them or not sell them. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this? Dr. Masterson, please come up. So, if I believe right, I did drive... Mr. Mitchell, did you review these lots as well?
Yes, and we did have a conversation, as you know, Mr. Chairman, about these lots. The ones that they identified were in interesting locations, and we... I don't know if we pulled Dr. Masterson into the conversation at that time, but we have had a subsequent conversation or two about this, and I know that Dr. Masterson, you know, has a position on this, and I know one of the concerns is the cross-country trail. So, anyway, so Dr. Masterson is here to weigh in, you know, given the location of McCourt and these lots, and the location to the school. I think he has some... An opinion that he'd like to share with you.
Excellent. Dr. Masterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Chair, fellow members of the school committee. I stand before you as the principal of McCourt Middle School, and also representative of the Highland Avenue neighborhood. The community worked together more than five years ago to build cross-country trails so that our students in cross-country could run safely every day for practice. They used to run every single day on the road. We had the support of the former mayor and current Lieutenant Governor Dan McKee, and that support transferred to the current mayor, Mayor Murray, who also supported the project. They provided town workers, as well as the Up With People group also helped McCourt Middle School out with this. Our trail was a host to a few races that were official. The biggest concerns that I have are the Clermont properties.
So, Dr. Masterson, so the Clermont property, okay. Which lots?
They're the most in a row. It was four of them in a row. Yeah, so those are directly in the path of the back of the cross-country trail.
So, Dr. Masterson, I'm looking at the picture. So, in relation, the school is on top. Okay, it's right on the top, right here.
Yes, so they're behind the school.
So, they're behind the school. Okay.
So, those four are directly in the cross-country trail. Now, in the event that those are sold, we don't have the opportunity to move the trail back due to DM violations that could be ensued. We also dispute the property that is on the front of Highland Avenue, at the top of our driveway, essentially.
There are two properties there.
Yep, so the first property where the... Our McCourt sign is. The property that is up for sale is legit, five feet away from the sign, and runs to the next house. So essentially, whoever buys that property and puts a house up is going to look at us in their backyard, one. Then, number two, it creates an obstruction to the view of the school, which is a safety and security concern of mine. I like to be able to see the school, and I want the neighbors to be able to see the school from the road, so that there's no vandalism at the school. The property on... The other property on Highland Avenue is where the old... Like stairs, is that what it is? The stairs that run from Highland Avenue to the back of the school, although they have sentimental value for many former students from the 90s and 80s. We don't dispute that sale. The stairs are still actually underground, I've been told.
So, Dr. Masterson, if you had to make a recommendation to us, what pieces... What parcels would you recommend the town could sell?
The Highland Avenue property that is not up against the front of the field. The other properties that are further behind in the neighborhood, I forgot the name of that road.
The only property that you would want us to not recommendation... Not make a recommendation on other... One of the Highland Avenue properties?
Yes, and the Clermont... And the Clermont Street properties.
All of the Clermont Street properties?
Every single one.
So, all the Clermont, and only one of the Highland. And the Crowell Street... Crowell Street property?
Yeah, that's far enough away from the school. That's nowhere near us.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Masterson. Mr. Dennan?
So, Mr. Chair, so Dr. Masterson's recommendation is to allow the... Or recommend the town sell 155? Is that right?
Dr. Masterson, could you come up, please?
I just want to make sure we get the right recommendation. This one.
This is 155. This is the 97. So, we want to sell this one. Well, not us sell, but recommendation to the town. And on the Crowell Street, keep all of these. I'm sorry. Clermont, keep, okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Masterson.
Mr. Chair, did they share with you how much they thought they were going to receive for each lot? An estimate?
They did not.
Okay.
There was a comment made to me, but I would... It was off the record, so...
I won't put you on the spot, but our understanding is that the reason for selling this is to make money.
Correct. That is true. Mr. Dennan? Yep. All right, so, I'm going to present the... I'm going to present to the school committee to notify the council and Mr. Alger and the mayor that... I guess I'm looking for a motion that we... Our recommendation is to... That they could sell parcel... Bear with me. No. Yes, I apologize. Mr. Hess? Okay. Mr. Hess, would you like to make the motion? And you can...
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we ask the town to retain ownership of Highland Avenue plat nine, lot 97, Clermont Street plat nine, lots 116, 137, 138, and 190.
Mr. Chairman, I would rather the motion ask the town to transfer custody and control of those lots to the school department. Even... I know we didn't ask for the other one where we had the walkway. I would think if we had a walkway there years ago, that that land there probably was under the control of the school department then. In light of what happened the other day, if there was another walkway there, it's another way out, and I would ask that we retain all of it.
Mr. Demodica, I agree with you, but at this time on our agenda, we only have a vote for our recommendation, but I would support a resolution asking the town that we can get on the agenda. So, Mr. Hess makes a motion that the town retains one property on Highland Avenue and four properties on Clermont Street. Correct, Mr. Hess?
Second for discussion.
Dennis, second for discussion. Mr. Dennan.
Should we talk more about this 155? So, I think if Mr. Hess's motion goes through, the recommendation to the town will be to sell lot 155, which is counter to what Mr. Demodica just said. Is that worth keeping as part of the town land?
Dr. Masterson.
I would ask people who are more familiar with the town development of that area, but there are houses on basically every single lot of that hill, except for that last one piece. So, I'm not... Unless you're going to develop it for the school department, I would see no purpose in trying to hold on to it.
Okay, my... I agree with you. There's houses on both sides, so on the surface, it makes sense to sell, but I think Mr. Demodica brought up a... Like an egress, kind of, you know, if the stairs could be restored, it's a way out of the schoolyard, the school grounds. And I just think we should consider that before we decide.
Mr. Fiorello?
Those stairs are probably in awful condition. I don't know what it would cost to actually do that, plus the liability would really concern me. And it's a very small lot, if I'm not mistaken, right?
In actuality, if you look at those plots, it's actually one of the larger ones.
Is it really?
Compared to the size of the homes that are there.
The... Just to expand on Mr....
Not McMansion-style, but, you know.
Just to expand on Mr. Dennan's comment, I mean, the other thing I would look at, I was going best on Dr. Masterson's recommendation, but even if we didn't use it as a pedestrian egress, certainly getting in and out of McCourt is challenging at times, and I don't know if another means of vehicular ingress and egress, or at least to have the option. But certainly, it's surrounded by houses, so converting it to a house wouldn't be out of character for the neighborhood.
You would need a significant investment to make that a vehicle egress.
Mr. Hess, thank you, Dr. Masterson. Any further questions? So, Mr. Hess has a motion on the floor. Mr. Hess, would you like to modify that motion?
A second, if you wanted to take a vote.
Mr. Adams?
If anybody did want to amend it now, we'd be inclined to go with anybody's thought.
Mr. Mitchell, would you like to weigh in on the piece of property on Highland, 155?
You know, I guess this is the one that we could potentially use, right? As... Is that the one that... Yeah, that we could use as an egress, potentially? I... You know what, I... Okay. Yeah, so, I would agree that a significant amount of work would need to be done.
Mr. Chairman, and the, you know, and the fact that we're going out for an $83 million bond, this is something that could possibly be used down the road. You know, if we decided we wanted to have the trees cut and put a new walkway in there as well. So, again, we're dealing with... It would areas to have no sidewalks. So if a child doesn't have to walk up five more houses on the street, or cross over the road from there, if we put a walkway in and got the funding for it, why give it away at the moment? Obviously, when they built McCourt years ago, they thought about that and put a walkway in. It just got changed, the configuration. Thank you. I would make a motion to amend that and include that lot.
I have to agree with you, Mr. Demodica. I would encourage support of this amendment, that we take 155 out of the recommendation to the town for possible future use. Mr. Dennan?
So, just for clarification... A second for clarification. So, we would recommend they keep every lot. I'll second that.
We keep... We keep Highland and Clermont.
Oh, yes. We're only considering those right now, right?
Correct. All right. Mr. Dennan makes a motion for the amendment.
I second.
A second. I'm sorry, second. Mr. Demodica makes a motion for the amendment. Mr. Dennan, second the motion for the amendment. Mr. Adams, I'm right. Okay? Right? Okay.
Now, we need to discuss the amendment.
So, the amendment is that we recommend to the town council, the mayor and their attorney, that they keep the Highland Avenue and the Clermont Street lots, in that they can sell off the Crowell Street lots.
That's not actually what the motion was. The motion was to keep the Clermont lots, I guess, if I'm getting that right.
And then, come back. Okay.
Keep both Highland and 155.
Keep both.
To include one of the Highland lots.
All right, so I have a motion. I have a second. Second on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, five-zero. Now, the amended motion is that our recommendation is we keep the Highland... They keep the Highland Avenue, they keep the Clermont, and they sell off...
No. There's nothing about selling off.
Not... Okay. Just keep...
That would be a further amendment.
All right. I apologize.
Just keep them.
Keep the Highland, keep the Clermont. All right.
Can I take a comment? I'd like... I don't know how this is going to be communicated to the town council or to the town. I know that they... They're just looking for our advice, and they could actually do whatever they want to do. But I would ask us to include in any communication the reason why we're keeping some of these lots is the cross-country trails. We don't want to lose those trails that are being used by students.
Adams, I'll get with you, and we'll write something out to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I have a motion. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, five-zero. Sorry it was so complicated. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Masterson.
I'd like to thank the school committee for their support, and I would make myself available for the town hall if they wanted to discuss this any further.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the discussion and/or vote to approve the overnight student field trips. Mr. Mitchell?
Well, as you can see, Mr. Chairman, we have four trips coming before the school committee tonight for approval, and it looks like first up is NCMS.
Mr. Connolly, welcome. Mr. Connolly, you're here for the Washington, DC, November 2018?
Correct. All right. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sean Connolly. I am a teacher at North Cumberland Middle School. I teach seventh grade social studies. This is my fourth year in the district. This is my third year advising the trip. So, we are intending this year, going on Veterans Day weekend, which is... Runs from November 9th to November 12th. The holiday that the school system would be taking would be Monday, the 12th, and our intention is to leave school on 6:00 AM on November 9th. Both North Cumberland and McCourt Middle School will be coinciding on this trip. So, our intention is to... We've already coordinated with Jump Street. It's a company out of Montreal. Also, the Quebec trip that runs through North Cumberland and McCourt Middle School has successfully used this particular tour company. We've had much success with it. This will be our third year for the Washington, DC trip through Jump Street, so we've already coordinated with them. We have accommodations. We'll be staying in Laurel, Maryland at the Doubletree West. We'll be going down at 6:00 AM on November 9th, and with the intention of getting to Arlington for 3:30, and our tour commences there. That's traditionally how we have started, barring traffic. We were successful last year. We actually got there literally right at 3:30 and got going. So, the tour is great just because it coincides with our curriculum. In seventh grade social studies, we go through a series of different events with the particular monuments... monuments that are there. It was particularly this year, was symbolic with our particular 7th graders. It was a great learning experience for them. They were able to get a lot from that to build and enrich their experience, along with the fact that they get to see their nation's capital. Not a lot of people in their lifetime may get to travel to Washington DC, and $615 for four days is definitely something we've tried to whittle away, whittle away to make it economical for families. The other great part about Jump Street, as well, is we offer three different payment dates. So, you know, our intention is in the next week, is to hold a registration meeting, where we'll inform parents about what it entails to register online. It's a much easier, efficient process, in which they're able to pay $200, along with an insurance policy, if they want to buy that insurance, just in case they had to back out on the trip. And additionally, we offer two other payment dates in September and October. This year, we chose to just only go with three payment dates, just because we found that it was difficult for families during the summer, just being away and trying to track them down. The trip's great in the extent that we get to see a variety of memorials, along with going to a series of museums, between the Smithsonian, the Holocaust Museum, the New Museum, which is a compilation of different media outlets, along with the fact that we're attend, this year is actually to travel to the African American Museum, which was recently opened in the last couple of years. So this is something that has been successful in the past. We hope you are considerate of our request, and we hope that you would approve it.
Mr. Connolly, I'm in full support of these trips. They're very well structured by the professionals like yourself that put them together. So any, any further, any questions from the committee? Mr. Dennen makes a motion to approve. I believe Mr. Demodica made a motion as well. Okay. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess. All in favor? Against? The ayes have it. Mr. Connolly, thank you very much. I think all you really had to do was just walk up to the microphone and give a nod, and we want to pass the term, so.
That's good advice for next year.
Mr. Connolly, I look forward to the presentation when you come back from the trip.
Thank you.
Pictures and everything. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, North Cumberland Middle School, McCourt Middle School, grade 8 students, Quebec City, January 2019. Hello.
I'm a little bit shorter than Mr. Connolly. Good evening.
Welcome.
We are wanting to embark on our, I believe we are at 21 years, 21st Annual Trip to Quebec City. A couple of changes for next year. One is that we have traditionally left on Thursday and traveled and come back on Monday evening. And our desire this year is to leave on Friday, returning on Tuesday. So it would still be a day out of school, but it would be on Tuesday as opposed to Friday. And the reason for that is that we had a change of hotel last year, and that hotel is going to be booked for a different event this year. And they are able to accommodate us if we leave on Friday. So it's a little bit nicer hotel, a little bit closer into the city, by a few blocks. And so that's one change.
I do know, so a couple of years ago, we did change the time.
We did.
We moved it a little bit earlier. Is it still the same leave time?
We would like to still continue to do that. It really makes a big difference.
What time was that? Did we?
We leave after lunch, so approximately 12, 12:30 is when we get on the road.
Does it make sense to maybe leave a little bit earlier? Will that help?
I think that that time works well, because it allows us to get kids fed at school. They have their lunch at school. And then it also allows us enough time that, once we're traveling, we've now, once we cross the Canadian border, we meet the tour company in either Sherbrooke or Drummondville, which is the towns immediately over the Canadian border. And they meet us there, and we have dinner at a restaurant there. So it breaks up the trip nicely. It works, it works beautifully. We're missing rush hour traffic, and the kids are ready to go by 12, 12:30 anyway.
Is a passport required?
A passport is not required if you are traveling with a school-sponsored trip and are a U.S. citizen. So any U.S. citizen that's traveling on a school-sponsored trip can go through customs with an original birth certificate, so it has to have the seal, raised seal on it. Anybody that is not a U.S. citizen, not born in the U.S., so even if they're a U.S. citizen but not born in the U.S., ask me how I know this, and they need to have a passport.
That may have changed in the last couple of weeks.
Yes. We'll keep an eye on it.
And I'm just curious, is it easier to cross over if the child has a passport?
What the customs agents have told us is that it is quicker on their end, but it is, is more paperwork for us on our end, so it's six of one, half dozen of another.
Okay. Thank you. Please continue.
Sure, no worries. And the cost is slightly higher than last year. Last year, we had the very large 8th grade class, so we were optimizing our, the number of students that were going on the trip. And if you have every seat on the bus filled, there is a significant discount. So we were able to take advantage of that last year. I don't anticipate that this smaller class is going to get to that level, so the cost differential this year seems a little bit larger than.
But what is that cost?
So the cost is $849, and that includes.
What was it last year?
Last year, we ended up at the 809, which was the optimal price. So that, and if we do happen to fill every bus, then we end up at 819. So it's a $10 increase over the maximum, or the best possible cost.
So every child who wants to go, goes?
We have not had a waiting list. I can't even tell you when the last time we had a waiting list was. We had a slight waiting list last year, but everybody that was on it was eventually on to the trip.
So the French students get first dibs?
I would love it to be that way, but it hasn't been for years.
Is that the way? No?
Nope. First come, first served.
Okay, first come, first served, for anyone.
Everybody gets their paperwork in to me. I offer the medical forms that parents can fill out over the summer. I let them know what the document requirements are, and if you have your documents ready, you're first on the list.
The chaperones?
Chaperones, we have a great bunch of folks that have traveled with us for years. Every year, we get a couple of new folks, new faces. We have several chaperones from McCourt Middle School, myself, and a whole bunch of us, about 15 of us from north.
Excellent. All right.
And if we've run out of chaperones in the building willing to travel, we then start tapping into the administration, and we've done that before.
Excellent. Anything else to add?
Nothing else.
Well, I would like to, I'd like to ask the committee for someone to make a motion. Mr. Hess makes a motion to approve the North Cumberland Middle School, McCourt Middle School, grade 8 students, Quebec City, January 2019 trip. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorillo.
I have a question.
And Mr. Dennen. And Mr. Demodica.
Superintendent Mitchell, the fact that they're going to be missing the school day on Tuesday, is there a way to activate that new policy the state created with the snow day bag or something, so the kids, you know, get that credit for that day? Analyzing snow crystals or something on the way home on the bus or something?
I think we'd have to give that a little, little thought, but I know that there is only a, maybe, I think there's one district that piloted. I don't know how everyone else feels, but certainly, we can consider that at some point.
I think the, the amount of academic language, language acquisition, history, and other things that are going on, conversions from Celsius into Fahrenheit and back and forth.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, 5-0. Congratulations. It'll be your 22nd year? Or 21st year, I apologize. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Cumberland High School Seniors Grad Night, Orlando, Florida, April 2019. Hello.
Hi, my name is Michelle McIntosh. I am a teacher at Cumberland High School. I'm here tonight for two reasons. First, I would like to give you a quick overview of the grad night trip that we had last month, well, in April, so I guess that was more than last month, right? The trip was fantastic. We took 52 members of the class of 2018 with five chaperones to Orlando, Florida. We met here at the Wellness Center, bright and early, at 2:45 AM for our roll call and baggage check to head on down to TF Green for our 6:30 flight. The trip went as smooth as you can imagine. There was not one behavior problem the entire time we were there. The students were fantastic. We traveled together as a group. The students also were able to have some supervised freedom, where they were free to park hop throughout the Disney resorts, which was a lot of fun for them. For many of them, it was their first time traveling without a parent, excuse me, and they really enjoyed this experience. They had a remarkable time. We had positive feedback from staff at, at the hotel where we stayed, which was the Port Orleans Riverside Resort. Beautiful. And again, no behavior problems to speak of. We have a picture here of our last day at Disney Studios, all 52 of us in one photo, which was great.
Excellent.
We did that a few times. They weren't happy with that, but I'm like the paparazzi, so everybody's got to get together for a photo op. This year, we are asking to travel to Disney on April 24th through the 28th, 2019. The itinerary looks much like this past year's, but we won't know travel times and those specifics until we get closer. I've been in contact with our travel agent, and the cost of the trip is going to be $1,350 this year. This does represent an increase of $100, because we would like to avoid that 2:45 AM roll call at the Wellness Center and leave on the last flight out on Wednesday evening versus first flight out Thursday morning. We were just dead tired, to be honest with you, on, on Thursday. So the students won't miss any additional school, because we'll be leaving later in the evening on Wednesday. They'll miss Thursday, Friday, and then we return on Sunday evening.
I apologize, I don't know if you said it already. Is there fundraising options for the children?
Yes, I didn't, I did not say that yet, but yes, we do have opportunities for fundraising. This past year, we, we did three fundraisers, which was an increase from previous years, where they only did one fundraiser.
What fundraisers are they?
So we sell sweatpants, and students receive a profit back of $10 per pair.
It's got the Clippers, Cumberland?
Yeah. We also sold 31 bags. They're like utility bags, where students received $16 per bag that they sold. And then we also did a scratch fundraiser, where students could net $100 per ticket that was scratched. So some kids, one student, she was able to fundraise almost $600 for the cost of the trip, so.
It's a scratch ticket?
Yeah, so there's like dots on the scratch ticket, and it has various amounts of donation underneath, so it goes anywhere from 50 cents to $3. And so you ask somebody if they would like to make a donation, they scratch it off, it's 50 cents, they give you 50 cents.
Oh, so it's 100% of the?
It's 100%. Well, minus the cost of what it costs to print the ticket, yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yep. So that was, that was a good one.
Excellent.
So we will be doing that again this year, if the committee approves this trip. A little bit of background on grad night, I'm not sure if you're all familiar with it, but this is a trip that this high school has been sponsoring since 1989. Did you go on it, Ms. Fogel? It's been a, sorry, sorry.
So I was in 1988, so I missed it by a year.
Oh, too bad, but maybe your boys will be able to go.
Yeah, can I chaperone if they go?
Well, if you're a tenured employee of the Cumberland School Department, then yes, you can go.
I have time.
Speaking of chaperones, we do have our chaperones lined up. There will always be three chaperones that go on this trip, no matter how many, if it's less than 30 students, I should say.
If it's within our policy.
Yes, yes. So, but there will never be less than three chaperones. So for example, if only 20 kids sign up, we still have three chaperones that go.
You're getting Mr. Fiorillo nervous over here.
No need to be nervous. Don't be nervous.
Excellent.
It's a great trip. It's a well-oiled machine, and I hope that the committee will approve this trip. Thank you.
Mr. Fiorillo makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hess. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Ayes have it, 5-0. Excellent.
Follow us on Twitter, too, and you can see all of our.
Look forward to the update. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Cumberland High School Chorus, Boston, Massachusetts, April 2019. You sat very patiently. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janita Ducharme. I'm the choral director at Cumberland High School. This will be the fourth trip that I'm proposing. This past year, we went to Nashville, Tennessee. We opted not to do a competition, mostly because I was exhausted, and I just wanted a break. Instead, we did a concert tour, and the concert tour went so well that we actually received a plaque last week saying that our performances were outstanding, which was a complete surprise. Our trips, the past two trips, once in Orlando, once in Nashville, cost about $1,200, which I know is very expensive for, for a performance trip. And so a few senior, future seniors had expressed interest in doing a competition that was local and a lot cheaper. So we opted to do a two-day trip, leave on a Friday, come back on a Saturday night up to Boston, Massachusetts, which has a wonderful classical music culture. We would go up to Boston on Friday, go to a college, which has not been determined yet, and work with a professor there that works with choirs, and do a master class. We did one in Nashville at Belmont University. The kids absolutely loved it, despite being up for about 16 hours before we got there, but they still talked about it as one of the highlights of the trip. So we figured doing the one in Boston, especially since so many of our students are looking into Boston colleges, it would be a great way to, to introduce them to some of the professors there. This would be a competing trip, so we would, the following day, do a music festival in front of three to four professional choral directors, who would then give us comments, grade us, and then work with us onstage to give us feedback and then constructive criticism. That evening, we would go to New England Aquarium. We would have a private viewing of New England Aquarium, and we would also have an award ceremony there, which would then give us our rankings and our ratings for the festival. Also on the trip, meals would be included, transportation is included, hotel is included, and daily activities, so walking, we have a tour booked through Boston, as well as dinner and a show. The cost would be about $400 per student, and we kept it really low, because we had so many students who do pay for it themselves and fundraise for it themselves. We do a lot of fundraising throughout the year, through chowder fundraisers, through concerts, through selling ads in our programs, and students will even just ask to go into siabara and sing carols and hold out a jar. And so it's, we do a lot throughout the school year. I'm blanking out, what else do you need?
Oh, how many students?
So right now, I'm only slating for 50, but I've never done a trip this cheap, so it could be a lot higher. We currently have 89 students in chorus. We had 31 students in clef. This would be a combined trip with chorus and clef singers. I was told there could be over 100 students in chorus next year, so we could potentially have 100 students who choose to go on this trip, and then we would adjust for chaperones accordingly.
What kind of transportation?
Coach bus.
A coach bus, all right, good. You know, it's nice, it's nice that we, we're strategically located here in Cumberland, Rhode Island, northern Rhode Island, because there's, there's schools in other parts of the country that would love to come to Boston, right? To participate in this. I don't know, any, any questions from the committee?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Fiorillo makes a motion to approve the Cumberland High School Chorus, Boston, Mass, April 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dennen. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Congratulations. Look forward to the update. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, vote to approve proposed independent Cumberland School employees, ICSI, bargaining agreement. Mr. Demodica.
Mr. Chairman, that's going to be table till next week.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, do we need a vote to table? Mr. Adams, do we need a vote to table?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and a vote to rescind teacher nonrenewal recommendations. Mrs. Fogel. Hello, Mrs. Fogel.
So in executive session, we presented a list of 48 non-tenured teachers, that we are making the recommendation that the school committee rescind the nonrenewal, so that they can either return to their position or participate, I'm sorry, in the matrix. So we would ask that you approve that list of 48.
Thank you, Mrs. Fogel. A pleasure of the committee. Looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the not, the rescind of the 48 teachers.
I'll cover you on this one, Mr. Demodica. Mr. Demodica makes a motion to vote to rescind the teacher nonrenewal recommendations. 48, correct, Mrs. Fogel?
That's correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hess, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you, Mrs. Fogel. Next item on the agenda, discussion and a vote to rescind dismissal of teacher, teacher A. Mrs. Fogel.
Thank you. We would make a recommendation that the school committee rescind the dismissal of teacher A, based on the conversation that we had in executive session.
Thank you, Mrs. Fogel. A motion, pleasure of the committee.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve to rescind dismissal of teacher A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hess, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fogel. Next item on the agenda, discussion and a vote to approve the amended policies.
No, no action.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Hess. Next item on the agenda, discussion and a vote to approve resolution SCPR 6, 2018-28, purchase of software package and training for student lunch program. Mr. Demodica.
Mr. Chairman, this was heard upstairs tonight. What this is, is RIDE is having the Cumberland School Department, who provides the lunches and breakfasts, et cetera, snacks, to BVP, RISE Academy, and to other schools. We have to now handle all the paperwork for this. And so this is a cloud-based software that will allow all the schools to input the information in, that will keep us in compliance with RIDE. The amount is $23,155. It's through Hartley and School Solutions of Tempe, Arizona. It was passed upstairs in a 3-0 vote. I would move passage. The funds are coming out of the school lunch account.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Mr. Demodica makes a motion to pass SCPR 6, 2018-28. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hess, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, personnel recommendations. Mrs. Fogel.
I have a number of personnel recommendations for you this evening. The first one is amended retirement. So if you remember correctly at a previous meeting, we, you accepted the retirement of Marcia Lindback, who is our payroll clerk. Due to some circumstances in the business office, she has agreed to extend her employment, and so now I'm bringing to, we request the advice and consent of the school committee on the amended retirement of Marcia Lindback, payroll clerk for the Cumberland School Department, with an effective date of October 6th of 2018.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve the resignation modification.
Amendment.
Do I have amended retirement? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dennen, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Ayes have it, 5-0. Mrs. Fogel, amended retire, oh, no.
It says resignation, but she can't retirement. I apologize. I don't know why it says that. So I have one resignation for you. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the resignation of Joshua Joseph, night custodian at community school, effective June 5th of 2018.
Thank you, Mrs. Fogel. Pleasure of the committee for a motion. Mr. Hess makes a motion to approve the resignation of one custodian. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dennen, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, 5-0. I'm sorry, Mrs. Fogel, it was, that was listed, that's why.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries. I picked it up. Next item, vote on appointments of five custodians.
Okay. So I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the following custodial appointments. Joseph Bergeron, custodian nights for the Cumberland School Department, effective June 25th, 2018. Deborah Busquet, custodian nights for the Cumberland School Department, except, effective June 25th, 2018. Deborah Del Santo, custodian nights for the Cumberland School Department, effective June 25th, 2018. Daniel Leet, custodian nights for the Cumberland School Department, effective June 25th, 2018. And lastly, I'm going to say his name wrong, but I think it's Joe Toes, custodian nights for the Cumberland School Department, effective June 25th, 2018.
Thank you.
And just a quick note.
Yes.
June 20, the reason we picked June 25th is that is the day, so currently, our custodians have a day position and a night position. And during the summer, which starts this year on June 25th, all custodians work the day shift, and they work kind of in packs, so they kind of work on projects and they clean a school in a pack. We're appointing, or we'd like to appoint these custodians to the school department right now, and then, as the summer gets further on, they'll be assigned to a particular school. Because as you know, I think we're down seven custodians, so we're hoping that this influx of custodial help helps us at our buildings.
Mr. Mitchell, the school's going to be squeaky clean. Excellent. Motion, pleasure of the committee. Mr. Hess makes a motion to approve the five custodians. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Demodica, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Ayes have it, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, leaves of absence for three teachers. Correct, Mrs. Fogel?
Yes. So I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the following, on the unpaid leave of Nicole Lanny, secondary English teacher at North Cumberland Middle School for the 2018-2019 school year. The unpaid leave of absence for Melissa Schenk, world language teacher, Spanish, at Cumberland High School for the 2018-2019 school year. And the FMLA leave of absence of Jennifer Slaughter, kindergarten teacher at BF Norton Elementary School, effective August 28th, 2018, with an anticipated return date of December 3rd, 2018.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve the three teacher leaves of absence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hess, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Ayes have it, 5-0. I feel like the spotlight is on us. Next item on the agenda, appointments of three teachers. Mrs. Fogel.
Before I begin, I just want to let you know, these are not new teachers to the school department. These teachers were hired at a ti, right around the same time that we were doing nonrenewals, and so it did not make sense to hire a teacher, have them start, let's say, February 12th, and then the very next week, hand them a nonrenewal. So when we appoint them around that time, we only appoint them for the remainder of the school year, and so in order for them to go back to their position, I need to reappoint them. So I just don't want you to think that these are anything other than us just putting people back into place. So I request the advice and consent on the following appointments. Victoria Amis, reading specialist at North Cumberland Middle School, with an effective date of August 28th, 2018. She's full-time at a Step 5. Erin Gardner, special educator, success classroom, grade 3 to 5, BF Norton, with an effective date of August 28th, 2018. She is a Step 6. And last, Elise Hickey, who is our EL, ELA teacher at Cumberland High School, with an effective date of August 28th, 2018. She is a Step 10.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Fogel. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve the three teachers.